All right, the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education is called to order for Wednesday, August 12, 2015. I have a motion to move into executive session.
I move the board enter into executive session for the purpose of personnel, collective bargaining, or legal, property acquisition issues, and student issues under Maryland Local Government Code Article Section 9-512A, numbers 1, 2, 6, and 10.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All right, others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We'll be back in an hour. Mary's County, for today, August 12, 2015, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, we'd like a motion to approve the agenda.
I move approval of the agenda with the following change, that Item 10.04 Uniform Rental and Cleaning Services and Item 10.05 Bread Products for Child Nutrition Program be pulled from the consent agenda and brought back at a later meeting.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, board reports. Ms. Lee?
So, this fall and winter, the Health Department is leading an electronics cigarette campaign called Vapowear, for which they are interested in student input to better understand youth's perspective on the issue. And so with that goal in mind, this could definitely be a topic to include with the Student Advisory Board this fall and winter.
Mrs. Crosby?
Yes, my granddaughter and I went to a school system activity called The Gathering, and it was held at Great Mills High School. My daughter's kind of made it, she's my daughter, I say that all the time, my granddaughter's kind of decided that she's going to Lenartown and being global in international studies, even though she's in science now. So I'm really glad that she went to that gathering, because now she's saying, "Oh Grandma," Mika, Miki they call me, "I really like Great Mills, and I have friends from Great Mills, and I might go to Great Mills, and I want to be a psychiatrist." Now, I think it's wonderful, and Mr. Smith was really nice to us. The kids actually had their own activities that they created, and nothing wrong with Lenartown, it's great too. Who knows where she'll go tomorrow, it changes every day. It's nice when you can, she can pick, put it that way. All right, the world is her oyster. They had things that were connected with kids, things that are, what is the name of the guy with the wand and the whole thing, and I just, I haven't read it.
Magician?
Pardon me?
A magician.
That's magician, no, but he's famous, he writes, they have all these books about him. Anyway, she reads those books.
Harry Potter.
Harry Potter, yeah. Would you believe I haven't read Harry Potter, holy moly. She said, I said, "What's that supposed to be?" She says, "Oh, that's Harry Potter, Potter." They had a skit. They had another skit, The Last Man on Earth, that was, you know, the kids' creativity is absolutely wonderful. So she liked that. Well, she said, "I would stay, Miki, but I've got to go down to Ocre Croak," and all I could say was, "Stay out of the water, stay out of the water." You know what I'm talking about, the sharks down there. I don't want my granddaughter being part of somebody's, some animal's dinner. Anyway, she really liked it, so you might want to look into it. It's, it might still be going on. They like give, have a week where the kids get a taste of it, and then it goes on. Do you know if Mr. Smith, if it's still going on?
The first week was at Great Mills High School, culminating with that fantastic video presentation, and then last week, on Friday, they had their culminating event at St. Mary's College, after they had worked with staff at the college, and it was really, it was really.
I thought it was real good, very creative.
Yeah, it was great stuff.
Mrs. Weaver?
Okay, I attended the drone demonstration. This was held at the new school area in the back, Captain Walter Francis Duke, so I did get to go in there and see a little bit of the new school, so that was, that was really nice. But John O'Connor, one of our county commissioners, was very instrumental in putting this together, and it was how drones can be used to help us in the future, and how they can help us now. So there was the, the fire, the police, the paramedics, all were there. We were, first, we were given a talk, two big companies, ASIC and Smartronics are very instrumental in putting this together too. But we were under a tent, and we could see the two drones, you know, on these big screens, what the police were seeing, or the fire department, you know, whoever was doing the demonstration at that time, and how it will help them. So if there's like a hostage situation, that they could bring a drone in and have that camera, and you would be amazed, I mean, they can pull such a close-up of like even like the door handle, you know, just different things like that, or the hotspots for, you know, the house fire, or even using for search and rescue, though they, the drones, they said, you know, can't see underwater, but you know, they can pick up a hotspot in the water. But the reason that I went was to see how this will affect our students, what type of learning, you know, class or, you know, learning opportunity will they need to be provided in order to be ready for going to college, or, you know, you know, to continue on as a career, either making the drones, or to being able to, you know, the different technology in there. And it's also, I know Smartronics put together where the police and the firefighters and EMS, they were able to communicate together, and they also were able to communicate, I think they put it with either Calvert or Charles County Fire Department, where they were all on one band, because right now that does not happen. So between like the video, I guess like the shots being come down, and it was pretty clear, you could, like I said, you could see everything, but, you know, you know, John O'Connor and I talked about how this will affect our students in high school, and how they can be prepared for going on for this type of career, because it is the future and it's here, so.
All right, I attended the new teacher orientation on Monday, with 107 new bright, smiling faces. It was a very nice program, Dr. Marr and your group who put everything together, fabulous workshops and everything, Montgomery as well, and all the other people I know I'm forgetting. Lot of good feedback, as, you know, we walked around afterward, you know, a lot of interaction of the new teachers with their principals already, so I think, I think that's great. Last night was the open house and building dedication, ribbon cutting ceremony for the charter school, which now has ownership of their building, so that is a huge milestone for that group that has worked so hard to, first of all, get the school up and running, and then continue and maintain it. And I think this year was the first year that they're going to have their eighth graders graduate, who have been there since kindergarten, so, kind of all very appropriate. And today's their first day of school, so welcome back to the Chesapeake Charter School students. Kids keep working on that summer reading program, get those journal entries made, and...
I tweeted out a reminder officially, 13, 13 days to go, and I said, "Hey, you know, go look at the summer reading list now, you have a little less than two weeks. I'll send out one on Friday as well, saying, 'It's next week.'"
Perhaps I should give you my child's email address that you...
Do a direct call.
Better be at home working on hers right now, so.
All right.
So, all right, one week, that's it. Mrs. Washington, you're up.
Thank you. Summer is a busy time for the public schools, contrary to popular belief. People think that everybody's off in the summer and relaxing at the beach and just having a wonderful time. We are having a wonderful time, but we're having a wonderful time teaching students. There are many-day camps and learning opportunities for students with the school system. So I spent time visiting some of those programs. I visited the Lunch and Learn Program at George Washington Carver Elementary School and at Lexington Park Elementary School. Also, there was a Title I camp at George Washington Carver, and there was the New Horizon Camp at Green Harley Elementary School. So students are still engaged, they are still learning, and they are ready to start school in a few weeks. I also attended the orientation for new teachers. It was a pleasure to meet those teachers, and we also provided a cookout, but the cookout was inside.
Cook-in.
Yeah, it was a cook-in at the Forest Center, since the weather was poor, and it was rainy, so that we didn't do that. And at the ribbon cutting for Chesapeake Public Charter School. So there are so many wonderful things we do. We're only supposed to talk about one event for the sake of time, but it's so much, and my visits were a central thing, learning opportunities for the summer for our students, and all the wonderful things that they can do to keep their minds engaged, so they will be ready for the first day of school. Thank you.
Mrs. Vance?
I also visited the new teacher induction, it was on Monday, and I think the two things I want to talk about quickly are just the fact that not only are there brand-new teachers who've never had the opportunity to teach in a classroom before, but also veterans who've been other places, who've elected to join our system, and I'm very glad that they, that they are. Mrs. Washington often talks about the importance of us growing our own, and I was really pleased, the number of new teachers to us who are our graduates. I had the opportunity, Mr. Serbiak, to talk with Marissa Steiger, who's going to be teaching fifth grade at Park Hall this coming year. And Marissa and my daughter Leslie grew up and went through school together, and it was so neat to see that she's gone off, gone to college, gotten her degree in education, and also her masters as well. And so this will be her first year in a classroom, and a little hard for me to think of her as Miss Steiger, but Miss Steiger will be joining the many other brand-new teachers who are graduates of Lenartown, of Lenartown High School, well, yes, Lenartown, and, and all of our schools. And just thrilled that they went away, came back, and this is where they want to be. It is important to grow our own, because this is a destination, it is not a pass-through. And so thrilled that their experience here in St. Mary's County Public Schools was so good, that they did want to come back, and this is where they wanted to work. So I'm thrilled by that, and I know that the wonderful leaders we have in place will continue that enthusiasm with, with our, all of our teachers, those who've been with us, and those who are new joining us. Thanks very much. And Dr. Marr, great job for you and all the staff who put it together. I know it was, it was, it was a large group effort, and, and it was seamless. It was beautiful. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
All right, well, I did have, I had the pleasure of attending all of those events with, with all of you, and it really is, we, we continue to work through the summer, and our kids are really cognitively, and what we saw with the gathering creatively engaged in all of our summer camps as well. So fantastic summer work, we are getting close to it. We will be welcoming back all of our teachers tomorrow, and then they will have the day on Friday to work feverishly getting everything ready. And then next week, they do the meeting with all of our content supervisors to get the latest instructional updates, and orient them to the learning that needs to occur this year. And then on Wednesday, the buses roll, and the kids come to all of you. So what I really wanted to do is, I really wanted to bring an artifact of our summer work. So our summer work here at Central Office with Fiscal Services and Human Resources, and all of our content supervisors, and all of our directors, and superintendent, and assistant superintendent, and deputy superintendent, we've been interviewing a lot of people. We have been finding the very best staff to populate positions at Central Office, but also at all of our school sites. So really as an artifact for our work, and to preview the people that you'll be encountering as you go out to buildings and do visits in the first few days of school, I bring before you the administrative appointments for our schools. So what I'd like them to do is, I'm going to just say their name, and then they're going to have to stand, okay, and remain standing until the whole group has been introduced, and then if any of you wish to take the microphone and speak, and I, well, we'll see. If, if not, if not, and that's okay, then I'd like you to come and just shake everybody's hand and formally introduce yourself to the board, because although we as a group can, and, you know, advertise and interview and, and select, ultimately all of you were appointed to your position by the Board of Education. So you are responsible to them for your employment, and so I know you will make them proud. So with that, let's have, first and foremost, joining us today, we have Ms. Beth Ramsey, the new principal at Captain Walter Francis Duke. Hello, Ms. Ramsey. And you're going to get a lot of traffic, you're going to get a lot of attention. There was a great picture of us in the enterprise in front of your school, turning away and walking into the building, so. But the building looked, you looked fabulous, the building looked great.
And I love her, Captain Walter Francis Duke pin.
I got a medallion, I lost.
Oh, fantastic.
Lots of leather helmets, somebody should come by and take a look.
Where are these?
I am...
In the showcase, right in the foyer.
Because I, I gave away my medallion.
I am...
I can get you a new medallion.
Oh, that'd be great, very good. Thank you.
Sure.
And as Ms. Ramsey was a sitting principal and vacated her position at White Marsh Elementary School, we have Ms. Cheryl Long, who is the new principal at White Marsh Elementary. Good morning to you. We also have Scott Serbiak, the principal of Park Hall Elementary School. Welcome, Scott. And Scott becomes the principal as Ms. Kathy Norton way far down there on the end, has moved up north and is joining the ranks of high school as the 12-month assistant principal at Chopticon High School. As we move over into the assistant principal ranks, we have Mr. B.J. Dothard, who is joining Lenartown High School faculty as their newest assistant principal. At Spring Ridge Middle School, we have Ms. Jen Consalvo, those will remember Ms. Consalvo formerly here at Central Office, who wanted to get back and work with children, so thank you so much. And Mr. Jeff Dorenzo is also joining the Spring Ridge Middle School team, working through. Now, you are all going to be trafficked fairly heavily on the very first day of school, as we want to see how construction is going. I had the pleasure of joining them yesterday. They've been working in a classroom with all of their desks kind of facing one another. It's a, it's a great bonding activity, that's, that's what I think. At Captain Walter Francis Duke, joining Ms. Beth Ramsey is Ms. Jamie Jamison, who is coming to us from Lenartown Elementary School, and last but by no means least, Dr. Jessica Western, who is going up to Letty Marshall Dent to be working with Ms. Kelly Courtney. So these are your brand-new building-level administrators and/or movers and/or appointments that have all come across the desks in that back room, and I just wanted them to see you and for you to see them, and just, I'm, I'm, okay, we're going to take a little time about me. I'm really proud of, I'm really proud of this group. I mean, this represents just a fantastic group of leaders, to join the already veteran fantastic group of leaders. So with that formally introduced, having been stood before, so now that they have an opportunity, if there's anything you'd like to share, board, with them, other than welcome?
Welcome.
Welcome. Great, well then let's have, let's have a round of, let's have a, first round of applause, and then a round of handshake, formal introduction.
Hi there.
Hi, Jeff, how are you doing?
Hello.
Hello.
Happy to be top to Chopticon.
Oh, congratulations.
Congratulations.
And now wait, so the, fools.
Are you sitting?
You said?
Yes.
And Mr. Mike Watson is the new principal at Lenartown High School, he's been communicating with us, he has strep throat. So it was, it was determined, Mrs. Montgomery said, "Well, we could have you come in and give everybody here strep throat, or..."
Saw him on Monday.
"Why don't you stay, and we'll be good to go." So with that, thank you so much. I think we're going to move to recognitions. Is it okay with you if we dismiss them to go and actually go do?
Since we were tardy, we kept them all longer than expected.
Please know that you have the fullest faith and confidence of your superintendent and your board, and go forth and do great work. Thank you so much for accepting your new appointments. Once again. So on, so on's my board report.
Wait, there you go.
Now?
Thank you all. That is a great group of leaders.
All right, continue on, Dr. Marr, yes, Dr. Marr, sorry, had to check my agenda. The Academy of Finance Grant Award.
Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
As you all know, the National Academy of Finance at Chopticon High School is designed to provide students with an understanding of various career options in the business and financial world. Students gain skills and knowledge through rich experiences and co-curricular opportunities involving our business partners. These experiences are especially valuable due to the incredible partnership and support of the Program Advisory Council for the Academy of Finance. Mr. Chris King, the financial, a financial advisor at Rayleigh Watson O'Neill, and one of our graduates, I might add, serves as the chairman of the PAC, and has been an active supporter and advocate for the Academy of Finance. Mr. King, if I could ask you and Mr. Bowling to join us up here, and I'd also like to introduce, we are joined by the Academy of Finance team at Chopticon High School, with Ms. Cindy Baden, the Academy of Finance lead teacher, Ms. Tammy Burr, assistant principal, Mr. Bowling, the principal of Chopticon High School, and we also have with us Ms. Jade Downs, who is a student at Chopticon High School and serving as an intern through the program here in our finance office this summer, and is doing a wonderful job. Thank you, Jade, for all your work this summer. The Academy of Finance at Chopticon High School has received a grant from Massachusetts Mutual Life Insurance Company, Mass Mutual, and is part of Mass Mutual's National Community Service Award Program. This grant is in the, in the amount of $10,000 for the Academy of Finance. Let's give them a round of applause.
Yeah.
Mr. King was instrumental in, and the PAC at Chopticon was instrumental in, in getting this grant award. The Academy of Finance is one of only 16 organizations across the country to receive this award. This grant will be used to support a trip to New York City's Financial District and other local trips, and/or projects that would afford students authentic, work-based, learning experiences. We are so grateful for the efforts and dedication of Mr. King, as well as all of the PAC members who volunteer their time and skills in supporting our students. So with that, Mr. King, we'd like to present you with this certificate of recognition.
Thank you so much.
And I don't know if you have a few words to share?
I have a couple things. Thank you, Dr. Marr. Thank you, board members, for inviting me in this morning as part of your agenda. I echo all the comments that Dr. Marr just spoke about. The Academy of Finance has very wonderful and amazing things happening there. I would invite all the board members to come check it out if you haven't already. Our students are completing the program, business-ready, and prepared to operate arguably one of the most important small businesses in the United States, and that's your personal finances. So they're doing a great job. I'd also be remiss if I didn't extend some thanks to everyone that helped me through the grant-writing process, which I found out was quite daunting and extensive. But especially, I'd like to point out the efforts of Vice Principal Tammy Burr and Lead Teacher for Academy of Finance, Cindy Baden, they were instrumental, and all the hard-working folks and staff at Chopticon High School, as well as St. Mary's County Public Schools in general, all the positive things that you guys are doing in our, for our community. With that said, as the Mass Mutual Community Service Award winner of 2015, I have the distinct honor and absolute privilege to present to Chopticon High School the Academy of Finance program check for $10,000.
We'll have to go inside to do that. I want to personally thank Chris King. He has been an active member of the Program Advisory Council at Chopticon High School for many, many years, all the way back to its early inception. And in representing Rayleigh Watson O'Neill, they have been probably our most, one of our most supportive sponsors of the National Academy of Finance. And, yeah, this grant-writing process, I can't take any credit for it. With Tammy and Cindy and Chris, they were back and forth, what an ordeal. So that $10,000 didn't come, didn't come easy, but, but thank you so much, Chris, we appreciate everything you do. He cares about the kids at school, and so does his company that he works for, and this is just a physical manifestation of that, of that care. So every penny of that's going, they've already got it spent. They've already, and the kids back there, Jade, they've already got ideas how they're going to go to Wall Street and turn things around, and, and make an impact. So that's what we need. So thank you, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
My pleasure.
And, and just a, a last word to echo all those before me. It is, this really is what makes St. Mary's County such a special place to work, to teach, to learn. It's the, it's the community, it's the partnerships, it's the dedication of staff to finding ways to get kids what they need. And to Ms. Baden, and Ms. Madich, and Mr. King, and Mr. Bowling, I know that this $10,000 will have an impact much farther than its, than its zeros. I mean, that, it's, it's, it's a fantastic thing, and it's a fantastic partnership. And Chris, you make us proud. You come back, and as we have people who come back and serve the schools as teachers, to have people who come back and work in the community and still find time to serve our students, it's quite a testament to you, Mr. King, and of course, it's a testament to those who taught you in high school. All right, thank you. So how about if we break and do a whole photo op? Because if you got a big check, we have to have a, we need to have a big photo op.
All right, 10-minute break.
10-minute break.
Let's see, next on the agenda, public hearing on the Section J policies.
No one signed.
No one has signed up, okay. Public comment.
No one signed.
Okay. The consent agenda, as amended. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as amended.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next on our action items is Ms. Melissa Charbonnet and the services contract. Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Charbonnet. I am here today requesting consent for the approval of two contract... I am here today requesting, um, consent for the approval of two contracted speech One is with the Soliant Health Services and the other is with the Educational Base System. Both of them are filling FTE vacancies that we were unable to secure FTE positions and are filling tho- those positions with a contracted agency.
Mr. Reed, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Mrs. Crosby?
No.
Miss Weaver?
Thank you.
Yeah, will this complete everyone that you need at this point or are you still out searching?
For speech pathologists, we're still looking for one more.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else? I have another question, Mrs. Washington.
Thank you. We need the teachers for the students to fulfill their IEP, so this is the best thing that we can do. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Allen?
No questions. Your, your board exhibit explained.
All right. Then may I have a motion, please, to approve the recommended item?
I move that the Board of Education approve the additional professional services contracts for special education therapists in the amount of $78,744.80 to Soliant Health Services and $51,026.94 for EBS.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And then we'll just move right into Mrs. Charbonne's next item, which is the application for federal funds.
This is a project that I am, um, particularly excited about. We have with us today, um, all of the partners. This is a wonderful example of how general education and special education are partnering for all of our students. We are committed to, um, narrowing the achievement gap between our general ed students and our special education students. Our partners with us today are, um, the principal of Esperanza Middle School, I think she stepped out, she was here earlier, Jill Mills, um, David Ha- Howard has been a very important partner in the technology piece of it, Alex Jaffers, uh, and Marcy Huff have been, um, our content and our special education supervisors that are involved in this. And at the school, we have Angie Rohr, who's going to be the one who is implementing this day-to-day, um, and Charlie Collins will be the special education teacher who is partnering with her. This entire project has come out of our local application for federal funds. And in that, we are required at each LEA to develop a plan that particularly addresses the achievement gap. So when we began to look back in February, we were looking at our data, what we know is that Esperanza Middle School is one of the feeder schools for our Title I, um, elementary schools. And what we have is trend data that shows that our sixth graders really struggle in that transition academically between fifth grade and sixth grade. The children with disabilities consistently struggle, um, and the gap begins to widen in sixth grade. Um, often, we're able to get back by eighth grade to where we were, but it's, um, it's a heavy load between sixth and seventh grade to close that. So the idea behind this is to attack this on the front end. So the plan that our math friends put together is we're going to implement a new model of instruction. It's a 90-minute instructional mo- block. All of the students receive 60 minutes of the core curriculum, sixth-grade curriculum, and then the other 30 minutes, children are homogeneously grouped into areas of specific skill, skill, um, intervention or skill enhancement. In order to track and monitor all of this, and part of the intervention that we're using is the Alex Assessment Learning and Knowledge in Space System. It's a data program that provides both intervention for very specific skill deficits as well as the enhancement. It's divided into content and topic, and what it does very efficiently is collate that data so that we know very specifically where student strengths and weaknesses are. We can group them into those homogeneous groups and then work on that skill mastery. This data ensures that our instruction is targeted, specialized, it's in the right sequence, and it's at the right level. It tracks our individual students, so we are constantly monitoring student progress. And this information gives our teachers the information to make those very finely tuned instructional decisions. This is a partnership between special education, teaching, learning, and professional development, information technology, and we're using the one-time supplemental grant for technology needs. This one-time supplemental grant is part of the local application. We're gonna use this to, uh, the piece that we needed the most assistance with is with the technology, and we're piggybacking onto the, um, contract that you all approved in June for the Dell laptops. Then we're using portions of the local application to purchase the Alex software program. All of this funding is, comes out of the local application, it's all pieces and parts of it. The Dell laptop, the technology cards, and the access points will be funded with that one-time supplementary. These grants are available from the State Department, and they're part, those, that one-time supplemental comes from carryover funds that MSD has reallocated to LEAs. And then the, the rest of it comes out of the new fiscal year 16 local application federal grants. One of the things that the state wanted to be very careful of, and we're very cognizant, is that, um, these are funds that are specifically dedicated and allocated for children with disabilities. And one of the things they wanted to know was, are general ed children gonna be benefiting from this? And I said, yeah, they will. And, but the way we can respond to that from, um, to make sure that we're not supplanting is then to look at, what are the in-kind services that, um, St. Mary's County Public Schools provides? And in that, we took, um, it was like a ti- not a time, I forget the budget term for it, but the study to look at, what are the contributions, um, instructionally? So we're looking at, like we do with Title I. So we can include in that, um, the salaries of all the teachers and all of what the gen ed side of the support is providing. And so you can see it's well in excess in what the grant portion was. Are there any questions?
Ms. Lee?
Um, no questions, thank you.
Mrs. Crosby?
Uh, very good, thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Weaver?
Thank you for providing all the background history. It was very detailed and I really appreciate that. Um, I wanted to find out, too, I know that it's gonna be a continual, um, where it's, it's one-on-one and it's, uh, gonna be helping the teachers know where that particular student needs to be every step of the way. But when you come to the end of the school year, how will you be then evaluating whether this, um, this program worked? Um, you know, like to go back and, and say, hey, you know, this was well worth it, this is, you know, we need to keep doing this? Or, uh, maybe it didn't work as well as we thought and therefore we need to do something differently?
Well, the primary data point we'll be using is the, the gap data.
Okay.
So we will look at, um, you know, the global data at sixth grade at Esperanza Middle School.
Okay. And when this is all said and done, would you be able to just give the board an update as to how you felt like it went, the good, the bad, you know, um, as far as this program? Just, you know, just at the end of the year, just give us an update and...
We'd love to, because we're really excited about it and we're anticipating that we're gonna have really good results from that.
Okay, great. I, it looks like a great program and I think it's, it's a great idea to keep kids from falling, whether it's special ed or regular ed, for those, you know, keep kids from even starting to slip behind. I think it's a great program, but, you know, I'd like to have some feedback at the end of how you think it went.
Well, the, this is really Angie's idea, so I wanna give credit to when we, there's lots of partners in here, but Angie is the one who, uh, really piloted the pilot and, um, came up with a more fleshed-out plan. And special ed was be, was able to bring some resources to the table. But the real ideas and, uh, the content instructional piece, um, belongs to Angie and Mr. Jaffers.
Thank you.
I echo, uh, Mrs. Weaver's sentiments. I particularly like the, the instructional block, the 60 minutes and the 30 minutes. So for those two children that do need additional instruction, they don't feel like they're being singled out, it's almost as if, you know, they're not going someplace different for a class. It's almost like a tutor within the school. And I, I think that that, to me, that is what word popped into my mind, um, when I read that. And I, I think that's, that's, that's great, because then you don't have that stigma that might be attached to the student that, that is struggling in a, in a, in a section of coursework. So, and I do have to thank Ms. Charbonne. I did have some questions on the grant and the, um, the parameters surrounding it, and she did provide that information incorporated in here. I know it was last minute, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So, um, but I do appreciate that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You're up, Mrs. Washington.
Okay. Um, this pilot will address those gaps in achievement with our special education students and the transition that they make from elementary to middle school, and in the end, all students will benefit from this program. Thank you.
Mrs. Allen?
I wasn't familiar with the Alex system, so I actually went and Googled it last night and, um, I was really intrigued. I think the part of it that, um, I'm most excited about is the fact that, um, it, this online tutorial will assess where each child is, and so for those areas that, in which they're already successful or they master that content quickly, it will move them on. But it also indicates that for those students who are struggling, it will, um, continue to go back and, um, and reteach, and that it, uh, frequently tests the students to determine where they are and provides that information to the instructors so that they can also tailor their, um, instruction to exactly what the students need. And, um, I didn't take the time to go on, um, to go further into the website, but it, there are tours of the program in there, and so I, I kind of look forward to, um, going back on and taking a look at that. Uh, I, I love the, the 90-minute block. I think it will be very interesting to see how successful that is. And to me, this is just, um, it, it's another opportunity, but it reminds me a lot of Apex, um, that individualized, uh, opportunity for students that, um, provides that feedback and gives them the time to master content in a different way. So thank you for, um, finding this. I saw that it was one of the major, um, uh, publishing companies that has put it together and, uh, kudos to you. And, uh, and I would hope that if we discover it is successful and successful at the level we need it to be, that it might be something that we look to roll out other places as well, so.
I attended, um, when I was at the leadership conference last fall in Ocean City, I attended one of the, um, sessions that Queen Anne's County has adopted it county-wide and have gotten some, specifically to address their achievement gap.
Right.
And, um, their results were very, very promising. And then I was talking to some colleagues, and Anna Rundle County, I believe, has, has piloted in, um, a couple of middle schools. And again, have found some very, are seeing some very promising results. So I was excited when Mr. Jaffers, um, brought it up, because I, one, I actually knew something about a math program. And excited to have the opportunity to bring it to St. Mary's.
And you, you bring up just a very quick, um, but important point, which is, um, the opportunity our staff take to go out to various meetings across the state, various presentations, and, um, and take from those presentations best practices that are successful in other places, um, but also that opportunity to talk to colleagues elsewhere, um, so that we don't have to always reinvent the wheel. And it happens in instruction, it happens, um, on the support side of the house as well. So, um, thank you for taking the time to do that.
Thanks.
Mr. Smith, do you have anything to add?
All I'd like to say is that this, once again, this is a fantastic blending of, uh, many people's efforts, um, to really put together a pilot that if it is as successful as, as we have heard it to be and as we hope it to be, um, it really would be something to be considered at a larger level throughout the system. And what I like most about it is, it is, it's a, uh, content, sound, instructional, online program, but it is reliant upon the teacher in the classroom and the support the teacher in the classroom has from their content supervisor. Um, the, the, the technology is only an introduced efficiency so that you can more quickly get to, you know, working with what you need to work with, with the students. And math probably has the, the greatest, um, opportunity for that technological efficiency to quickly get to where students are, uh, and to move them to where they, to where they need to be. So, um, just thank you, as always, Ms. Charbonne, so, for working so closely with our wonderful content supervisors, Mr. Jaffers, kudos to Mr. Jaffers, and certainly our building-level leadership, Ms. Mills, and your fantastic teachers at school, it's Rohr. Thank you very much.
Okay. And with that, I am seeking a motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of 146 Dell 3450 Latitude laptops from Dell at the MEAC con- contract price of $563.19 per unit for a total purchase of $82,225.74.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dave Howard?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. Um, I'm here today to ask the approval for, uh, our renewal for our Microsoft software. Um, we're actually using the MEAC contract for this. Um, this is a new contract agreement, it's a three-year contract agreement with MEAC and, um, the Microsoft reseller. We're using the Microsoft software for the desktops, laptops. It also has a, um, a mobile device management component that we can actually utilize for some of, um, BYOD projects or even our own, um, institutional-owned equipment. The Office software that most people are familiar with, the Word, the PowerPoint we're using here, uh, this gives us our annual licensing agreement for all this product. It also covers database servers that we use for our websites and our e-schools, e-finance, all are dependent upon this Microsoft software licensing agreement. Um, as I said earlier, it's a three-year term. The last one, um, we actually executed off of was, was in 2010. It was a five-year contract. This year, this time, it's a three-year term. Um, and we're getting the cost savings, um, by going in with a large group, part of Maryland. Um, it makes it a lot easier, keeps us, um, in compliance with software licensing. In the past, um, before these agreements were in place, it was up to us to manage all of the different software licensing, and that could always be an issue. Um, you know, if you don't have enough licensing, you could be putting yourself at risk. Um, and here's some of the values. It, it, like I said, streamlines the procurement process, um, it gives us access for support for the latest technology, software updates, it provides, um, staff, faculty... putting yourself at risk. And here's some of the values. It, like I said, streamlines the procurement process. It gives us access for support for the latest technologies, software updates. It provides staff, faculty, you know, the productivity software. We're not using the email component anymore. We're using our Google mail, but it's there for other schools. So, it's going in, leveraging with a lot of other partners throughout the state. Okay, so I am asking the board to give us the approval for executing a contract with Bell Tech Logic, utilizing the Maryland Educational Enterprise Consortium contract vehicle. The annual cost for this is one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, five hundred and five, eighty-six cents. Any questions?
Ms. Lee?
Sorry, excuse me, no questions.
Mrs. Crosby?
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Howard, thank you, as always, for providing a very detailed background as to how you came about everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other questions?
Phenomenal price, excellent job, so.
Thank you.
I have nothing else, and I echo again. All the information was complete, it was there, so nice to have it done. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, great job.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate that you used the consortium to do this, and that we were able to leverage a larger buy to provide us a better cost for us. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, any last comments?
None whatsoever, other than thank you very much. Thank you so much.
All right. With that, if I could please have a motion regarding this action item?
I recommend that the board approve the agreement with Microsoft for the purchase of Microsoft software license subscriptions from Bell Tech Logic Incorporated for the classroom use by all St. Mary's County Public Schools and staff at an annual cost of one hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and five dollars and eighty-six cents for the fiscal years two thousand sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Mrs. Howell, on Wildwood sidewalk easement.
Good morning, and I apologize in advance. I'm fighting a summertime cold, so I do hope my voice will hold out. I am before you today on behalf of Wildwood Residential LLC to seek approval for a temporary construction easement for the construction of a sidewalk. They did approach us about a development that they have, which is Evergreen Town Homes that they're going to be constructing in the next year. And what they'd like to do is, they're doing this the right way. They're approaching us well in advance of the construction of the project. They've left room between their townhomes for a construction of a sidewalk to connect into the pedestrian pathway that we have at Evergreen Elementary School. So, they're seeking the easement. The terms of the agreement for the temporary construction easement are twelve hundred square feet, or point zero two seven five acres, more or less, for the construction of the sidewalk. The utility companies will have access within that area to move any, contact Miss Utility, to move anything that they need to for the construction of the sidewalk. The agreement will only be enforced with the exception of the insurance and indemnification, which is required of Wildwood Residential LLC during the period of construction of the sidewalk. And Wildwood Residential LLC, its successor and assigns, are responsible for paying for all construction costs required for the engineering and construction of the proposed sidewalk. And as I said, they have actually left, within their townhome complex, they've left room in between for the connection, so that when students access, which is this area here, off of the parkway when they access in, they will not be walking up to someone's backyard. They'll actually have a thoroughfare in between the townhomes. A lot of times, we'll get a request after the fact in a residential neighborhood to add something, and we have to work out that with an adjacent property owner. But they've actually created a thoroughfare that will connect from the pathway through the sidewalk into their Mountain Laurel Lane. So, there will be a thoroughfare that will be able to allow that to happen without going through anyone's property. As I said, this, they've started to break ground and put some of their infrastructure in, but this townhome complex will be completed within the next year, within their timeframe. So, the proposed action would be that the Board of Education approve the temporary entry and construction agreement with Wildwood Residential LLC for the construction of a connecting sidewalk at Evergreen Elementary School, as presented by staff. At the time that this is executed, if approved by the board, they do have to require, we require that they give us seventy-two hours notice prior to starting construction. They will give us much more than that, and we will coordinate all those efforts with the school, so that the school is fully aware that construction is going to be ongoing. And there are many other terms and conditions that were provided as part of the agreement that we gave. If there's any questions, I might answer.
Ms. Lee, no questions, thank you.
No, thank you.
Once the sidewalk is complete, who is liable if there's any injuries, or snow removal, or upkeep of this passage?
Okay, the sidewalk is currently, it is on our property, so we would be liable for the sidewalk. In terms of snow removal, that would be part of the responsibility of the school system. And I did have a discussion with Mr. Varner, who is in our operations department. Mr. Witten, unfortunately, is on vacation, so I wasn't able to contact him about that. That long access pathway is a little over a quarter of a mile. And as I discussed with Mr. Varner, right now, that is not, they do not remove the snow during snow removal at this point in time. That is something that I can address with them in the future. Anything over three inches is covered by the contractor, so I can talk to Mr. Witten when he comes back. Primary focus when they're removing snow is to move it around the school. And they do not do that, because one of the things is, when they, if they were to do that, then it connects out into the main road, and that may not be plowed as well, because that would be on Wildwood Residential. So, that was something that Mr. Varner and I discussed would need to be further discussed.
Okay, and so, I guess my concern is, is like, say, because I know down Great Mills, like, road and all that, they have that big to do with sidewalks not being shoveled, so.
I think that would be something Mr. Walker, and Mr. Varner, and Mr. Witten might want to discuss in the future.
Okay, and then, any injuries, let's say if ice is left there, you know, I guess I was just looking at the liability. Will there be an insurance, or is that insurance just go off of our insurance?
On the pathway itself?
The pathway itself. That's what I'm talking about, is that, just that pathway?
Right. This sidewalk would connect into our existing Evergreen pathway that we have, so it would be covered under the MAB.
But I think she's, you're talking about the pathway through the townhouse.
Right.
Right, like, once it connects to the sidewalk and then goes through the townhouse.
That would be Wildwood Residential LLC.
Okay, so then they're responsible for, okay.
We would only be responsible, the small section, this sidewalk would connect into our pathway, would be covered under our insurance. Anything on Wildwood Residential side would be Wildwood Residential. And we have this in many other instances. There are other schools that have connecting pathways, and that would be covered on the residential side would be the developer on our side would be us.
Okay. All right, thank you.
My only question on the liability insurance, it expires in like June of 2016, so they're required to provide us with another certificate if the work is not finished by then. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And we would, this easement becomes part of something we track, and we would then require them to provide an annual update on that.
Okay, just in case it wasn't completed by then.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
You have answered all my questions.
Mrs. Allen?
The, I don't have, I think that the questions that have been asked thus far really covered the, my concerns, other than just to comment on the fact that the number of townhouses that they show, how many of those do you know have been already constructed? Is this?
This section is one that they're currently working on, and it is part of our projections that we did account for when we did the redistricting.
Okay.
This is one of their final phases that they'll be incorporating as part of their development, which is why they'll be coming back to it at the end of the year.
Yeah, that's, that's going to be a significant number of students, I would think.
Yes. We anticipate another thirty-five to forty students will be coming out of this portion of the community. What you'll notice within Wildwood right now is, you'll notice in the older section of the development, they're infilling there as well. They are going to maximize the full potential of the planned unit development. So, we have accounted for, in our enrollment projections, we have accounted for the maximum amount of residential development that they can incorporate. And they should be completed in the next, I would say, eighteen to twenty-four months. They will complete the security.
I scanned the headlines in the enterprise today. I have not had a chance to really delve into it, but I did see that they were denied seven houses. I know, seven is not a big deal, but I'm interested to read that article and see what that was about.
It was, when we originally started to look, when they did that, we were not anticipating that they were going to go back into the older section and develop the infill, but that is starting to occur. So, we are tracking, we are in constant contact. We have a very good relationship with the developer, and they do consistently give us their plans as they amend them. So, we are constantly in contact, and we do coordinate with the school the summers, to make sure that we are staying in contact with their enrollment.
I like your choice of words. I wonder, I wonder if the people who live in Wildwood in the older section understood that there was going to be infill. All right, thanks very much.
Mr. Smith?
Oh, I have no questions. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion for this recommended action item?
I move, sorry, just a moment. I move that the Board of Education approve the temporary entry and construction agreement with Wildwood Residential LLC grantee for the construction of a connecting sidewalk at Evergreen Elementary School, as presented by staff.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. And Mrs. Howell, just stick around up there and have the budget amendment for the capital improvements program.
This is something that we do on somewhat of a semi-annual basis. In late June, we did receive a request from the county's chief financial officer to provide an update on the site acquisition funds, based on county discussions regarding projects and funds that were being held for future use. Typically, twice a year, we do have a budget sweep that we are asked to do, and we had already previously done one in the spring. And we close out the accounts that are either a warranty or closeout, and have balances of funds left over, due to the diligence of the construction department managing the funds. This one was in addition to that, and the county was looking at projects that were in FY fifteen and sixteen, some older funds that had not had any expenditures on them, and were being held for future use. So, they did ask us and other county agencies to take a look at those, to see if funds could be identified. The project for us was site acquisition, was the account that they did ask us to take a look at. And we did have a multi-year project fund for site acquisition. Funds were allocated in FY thirteen, and additional funds were allocated in FY fifteen, as we had started to explore sites for a future high school. And in total, we had had an allocation of four million, two hundred ninety-six thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars. Expenditures to date were one hundred seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. Based on our acquisition of what we were looking to do at this point for projects that we have coming up for elementary school, and looking at our high school feasibility study, we have an anticipated expenditure of one million, one hundred and three thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-eight cents, which leaves an available balance of a little over three million dollars. We did take a very good, hard look at it. We are actively pursuing state approval of the E-Lift property at the central portion of the county for the next elementary school. And the county is looking at property acquisition as a donation for a high school. And we, in January, did release the contract for multiflores, which is where the available balance of three million dollars comes from. So, we did take a good, hard look at what our anticipated expenditures would be in the future. As I said, the funds were originally allocated for use as a future elementary school and a high school site. We do have the school under contract and are completing the feasibility study for the E-Lift property. The school system did release the contract in January at the request of the commissioners for the multiflora property in the northern portion of the county. And just recently, the county commissioners accepted the two hundred and forty-nine acre land donation that could be used for a potential future school site for us in the central portion of the county. Based on that, we are recommending that three million, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and seven dollar balance be refunded back to the county. The funds on that are comprised of eight hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars in transfer tax, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, nineteen dollars in unsold general bonds, and the largest portion of that is impact fees that have been collected for the use for capacity needs for future schools, which is one million, eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand and eighty-nine dollars. The way that capital funds work, capital funds that are not utilized must be returned to the county commissioners' reserve capital account. They have one for each fiscal year. In the event that we need to, the school system can request use of these funds for projects that are over budget or in emergency situations, which we did with the Spring Ridge Middle School fire. Other county agencies all put in funds that are left over to the same pots. So, in this instance, it would be the FIN two thousand and sixteen project. So, the proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the transfer of three million, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars from the site acquisition local capital improvements program project to the commissioners of St. Mary's County FIN sixteen reserve capital improvements project account, as presented by staff. We have made other, based on due diligence of the design and construction, we have made other deposits within this account. And in the event that we ever need to, we could go back and ask the commissioners to withdraw funds if we ever needed to for future projects.
Mrs. Lee?
No questions, thank you.
Mrs. Crosby?
No, thank you.
Thank you for explaining where each, like, about the taxes and stuff, because I was confused when you had sent this originally. Thank you.
Thank you very much for putting together that slide. I had the, I had the same, I had my calculator out, so it was much, it was much easier to read it that way. So, thank you very much for doing that for me. I appreciate it. Mrs. Washington?
No questions, thank you.
Mrs. Allen?
Simply a comment, that money had been allocated to us by a previous board to allow the school system, the, not just the freedom to go out and seek land, but to begin negotiations, and to have an understanding of what funds were definitely available, so that we were not out seeking property that far exceeded the available funds. And while I, you know, know that we certainly have gone back, and as projects close out, we have reverted funds to this account previously, with an understanding that we would be able to utilize them, the loss of that flexibility, knowing that we're still going to need potentially another elementary site, is of some degree of concern, but do appreciate the fact that the commissioners are working to make sure that they are actively utilizing funds appropriately, and that they're seeking to have a better understanding of what funds are actually available for use, and what needs to remain as fund balance, or as a reserve for certain projects.
So, to make sure everyone is aware, what we have reserved, as we've reserved in the anticipated expenditure, we have reserved all of the funds that we need to complete the contract negotiations and acquisition for the E-Lift property. For future elementary school, we do have the ability to do an early childhood center at Evergreen and at Captain Walter Francis Duke, and we would have the opportunity, because of the size of the E-Lift property, to do an early childhood center there, primary building. We do have the opportunity at Hayden to have the discussions of the middle school site there. And then with the acquisition of the donation at two hundred and forty-nine acres, we would hope to be able to have discussions of a high school. So, hopefully, we are in a position we've acquired what we would need for the foreseeable future, and with the hope that, with the money going back into the FIN reserve, if there was another opportunity, we could go back. So, hopefully, we've put ourselves into a very good place for the foreseeable future.
I know we have options. I think the one thing that we haven't ever really done is that we have often brought up the topic of an early childhood center, and that's certainly what we have at Benjamin Banneker. But we have never, as a body, really had a conversation about how effective the model of having an early childhood center is. I know that there, in Calvert County, that model has been used, and there have been some, some issues over there. And I don't know the totality of over there, and I don't know the totality of those issues, but I, I think that before we go too far down a path, it is worth having an understanding of exactly how that works. If it's effective, and we can ensure that it's effective, then, and, and this is always a contingency. And I think it's, it's important to have options, but I just, you know, before suddenly we decide, okay, the next thing we're gonna do is an early childhood center, let's, let's really make sure that is the best instructional model to be used, and how does that work?
And so, Ellen, one of the things we've talked about, maybe as we go farther into the capital improvements program, because we're just starting, we'll be presenting in the next meeting the state capital improvements program. One of the things I might offer is that when we get to starting discussions on the local capital improvements program, we've discussed in the past, maybe what we explore is some money locally to do an edspec feasibility study on that, to put some local funds in to do that, we've had that discussion in the past, the project is needed for capacity needs. So beyond E-Lift, we are going to need something else.
Right.
That school is in the CIP to address that, that additional need. So it might be an appropriate time to put something in versus just doing that school to put some small amount of money in to address the feasibility planning of that.
Right.
And the state does support those type of projects, so.
And that, and certainly, over the years, we have waxed and waned. We've, you know, moved full elementary school projects in and those early childhood centers out, and, and so forth, so. But rather than continuing to go back and forth, let's, let's really take a look at what makes sense, and then start making the case for what makes sense and why it makes sense, and how we know.
And I think at the same time, we're doing that, the transitional middle school, we've talked about transitional middle high school, that whole capacity of elementary, middle high might be an appropriate time to have that discussion.
Well, and it's also, you know, that when you look at the leadership of a building like that, our elementary schools are growing, and is it reasonable to have a principal over an early childhood center and, and a, a general elementary that may have nine hundred or a thousand students in it? And, and how does that work, and is that effective, and is that the best model at that age? So, I didn't mean to hijack this conversation, but.
It's an appropriate time as we're moving this funding out, it's a pertinent time to have that discussion.
Well, and I'll just counter back, you know, we have eighteen elementary schools, and we're growing to have nineteen, and, you know, we only have four middles and three highs.
Exactly.
And so, one of the things that we need to do probably as a county is take a look at, you know, how we are redistricting or districting our kids into programs, and whether, you know, we can build capacity at the existing sites and, and move things around. As we're going through organizational plans, we're doing our final tweaks as we get ready for school. I have very big, big, big schools, and we have very little, little, little schools. And that means that the experience in elementary school can be wildly divergent.
Right.
You can have somebody who's gone to a seven-hundred-seat school and somebody who's gone to a two-hundred-and-ninety-seat school. And so, that is a, that's a large question. Before we start looking for, you know, more land and considering building more sites, we, you know, we certainly have enough properties.
Yes.
So, that'll be, that'll be a great conver, I know people love to talk about redistricting, so. It'd be a great opportunity to engage with our parents and stakeholders, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, and, and thank you for the presentation, and you've, you've made, you did, you made very clear exactly, you know, the process, where the money comes from, and where it goes back, and how it's being used, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, do I have a motion for this action item?
I move that the Board of Education approve the transfer of three million thirteen thousand seven hundred and seven dollars from the site acquisition local capital improvements program project to the commissioners of St. Mary's County FIN sixteen reserve capital improvements project account as presented by staff.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Mr. Jeffrey Thompson?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Thompson.
Good morning, good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk to our bus drivers yesterday morning. They were, they were an attentive group, very good.
They're definitely unique and definitely.
And getting ready.
Very good group, so.
Yeah, it was fun.
A lot of bus drivers, yeah, we, we have about four hundred, you talk about bus drivers, attendants, and contractors, when you take, you know, it's a very large group, a lot of people involved, and they definitely do their job well, and have a lot on their plates, you know, with the safety of students, managing the roads, a lot of different items when they're out there, so they do a fantastic job. Here today, it's that time of year to talk about school bus contracts. So today, I'm, wanna bring to our school bus contracts for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year. So we currently transport almost nearly eighteen thousand students each day to and from school. For this year, we are gonna utilize forty-two, we have forty-two school bus contractors, which we utilize and operate a total of two hundred and forty-eight school buses to provide this service. Of those buses, a hundred and sixty-three will be used for regular school bus routes, twenty-four buses will be used for special needs school bus routes, and fifty-seven buses will be spare buses, regular spare buses, and four are special needs route spare buses. This year, we have thirteen school buses that are replacements, and those contractors will receive a new six-year school bus contract associated with the new school bus. In addition, we have seventeen school buses that have come to the end of their original six-year contract, and they'll be awarded another six-year contract. We have one regular route bus that'll receive a one-year contract, and two contracts that have been transferred. And then all the spare buses will see, receive a one-year agreement, and that's, these items, sorry. So thirteen replacements, seventeen six-year contracts to be renewed, and one regular route bus to receive a one-year contract, two contracts transferred, and sixty-one spare buses. The changes to the formula, which are part of this, the contract approval, the per-vehicle allotment, PVA, which pays for the bus itself, we have an increase of forty dollars compared to FY fifteen, so it's a very minimal change, basically, it's a flat, flat change, so it's only about five hundred and twenty dollars to our budget increase over last year for what the, that, from last year's price to this year's price. It's only about a five hundred and twenty dollar increase total. Operations cost, we have an increase of one point seven percent, and that's based on Consumer Price Index, which totals to seventy-nine dollars per bus, and total increase ends up being about fourteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars. Then the hourly payments, we have an increase of two percent, which is approximately forty cents per hour, so it's nothing staggering. The total increase across the board ends up being ninety-five thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars. And for maintenance payments, this is a per-mile payment to cover maintenance costs on the buses, it's an increase of one point seven percent, which is also based on the Consumer Price Index, and that's two cents per mile, and the total increase is seventy-four thousand dollars. So today, I'm recommending that the Board of Education approve the bus contracts as outlined on the list that was provided by staff. So are there any questions at this time?
Ms. Lee?
No questions.
Mrs. Crosby?
No, thank you.
Mrs. Weaver?
Thank you for providing all the attachments with the contract and how you came up with all the formulas and everything.
Thank you.
I have two questions.
Sure.
Or three. Is there any changes in the contract verbiage between last year and this year?
There's, uh, no changes in contracts from anything.
Okay, and then on attachment A, I think it is?
The formula.
Right, the, the interest rate, that five point seven percent, is that encompassing all the changes that are outlined in there, or is that different?
The, that's under the PVA portion of it, yeah, that's part of that PVA calculation, the formula. So when I talk about PVA, it's only increased about the, um.
The two percent of the one point seven?
The small, yeah, that's incorporated in there.
Okay, okay. And, I think that was it, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Washington?
Very good job, I have no questions, and thank you for including the contracts, it's always good to review those. Thank you.
Mrs. Allen?
Since usually our contracts are for six years when they're awarded, and you have one bus that you're going to extend a one-year contract to, what, why are we extending a, a one-year contract for a certain bus?
He had a replacement issue with the manufacturer, with the vendor, of getting it, so with the timeframe that the new bus would come in, his, it would be well into the school year, so we're gonna let him run his previous bus that was on the route for an additional year, and then it'll come in next year to be replaced.
Great, thank you very much, I appreciate it. And the, the funding for this will be absorbed within the budget as it stands for the current year?
The budget that was, the current school year's budget, everything is already incorporated into the budget.
The, um, the gas prices will, diesel prices will, will help with that this year, I think.
Yes, hopefully, they remain where they are.
Maintain, yeah, yeah, I hope so.
Mr. Smith, anything to add?
No, just thank you very much, sir, I'm looking forward to the, next week, so the dry run is on.
Monday, we, all the buses will be out on the roads, so you'll see them. I mean, today, we do have the charter school buses, and all summer, we had our summer school programs that were out there, but Monday will be the big day when you'll see lots and lots of buses making fictitious bus stops, or making their bus stops without students, let me say that.
Running through, getting your timing.
And they do the, the route morning and afternoon?
They're supposed to do the route morning and afternoon on Monday.
That's, I had, someone made a comment to me about the fact that they didn't understand why they had a different bus this year, and why the time for pickup was listed as ten minutes later than it had been previous year. And I said, well, more than likely, different bus, different route for some reason, and therefore, different time. But I told the person, if they wanted to have at least an inkling of what they could expect, that they could look out Monday morning, bright and early, since it's a middle school student, and should have an understanding, somewhat of an understanding of expectation as to when the bus would be stopping to pick their child up, so, thank you for, for confirming that I was accurate in what I told this person.
Well, there are some changes with the schools, just because of the new school, and the time changes with a couple other schools based upon that, so there are a few things that had to be coordinated with that, so there are some things that did change.
So, thank, thank you to.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, how will the citizens be informed that there will be a drive-run Monday, so they know they may have to start out earlier, because you're gonna put, what, about a hundred and eighty buses on the road?
How are the general public?
Yeah, 'cause a lot of, especially on two thirty-five, the traffic is heavy anyway, and when you have all those buses out there. And will you also have the signs up, letting people know that school starts on a particular day, that there be more traffic on the road, and be prepared? Because I've seen those signs in years past.
Yeah, typically, that, we work with the county government, the sheriff's office, and they put those signs out. So we coordinate with them for those signs to be placed out, so it's not the school system itself, it's a coordination with the county government. Now, typically, the dry-run day, we don't normally put something out, except they're in our general paperwork, it's mainly the nineteenth, but it's something we could talk about if we wanted to put a press release out.
We certainly.
You know, a parent had a panic attack, because she said, did I misread something? I see all these buses on the road, I mean, is school starting, what's going on?
It did startle me the first time it happened.
What is, what's going on?
So what we'll do is, a plug for your handle, what's your Twitter handle?
Uh, I don't know, SMCPS Bus.
I think it's SMCPS underscore bus, it's creative like that. We will, we'll, we'll.
You stopped him.
We'll tweet something, well, I follow him, he's, he's got great tweets. We will, we'll, we'll tweet that out on Sunday evening, and again on Monday. I'll do it on my feed, we'll put it on the, on the homepage of the school system website, and we'll put it out on Facebook, because we have thirty-five hundred followers on Facebook, and just tell every parent they need to follow us on Facebook. Click like, read our stories, interact with us, send us questions.
Needs to be the greater community.
Yeah.
They wanna know what their tax dollars are invested in, then.
Come see us.
Plug in and find out.
Follow us on Twitter.
So don't panic, it's just the dry run.
We're doing, yeah, we're, we're dialing in the, the process, so.
And the bus link works? The bus stop link works?
The bus stop link works, and, and I believe we'll even be posting the, the entire routes for consumption for the people if they wanna just kind of follow along with the routes for the first week or so of school. Because, not that this ever happens in my family, but the bus comes down, and it picks up, and then it goes around the neighborhood, and so we know the last stop before it leaves, in the event that, let's say, I have a middle school son who doesn't make the bus. So we know, we know what stop to get them to, so we will have the information by Friday, and it'll be something else we could tweet out and get some Twitter followers for Mr. Thompson, at SMCPS underscore bus.
We want to encourage people.
No.
To have to dash to a different bus stop.
No, but we want your child in school. We want your child in school.
Correct.
If they're there, we're gonna pick them up.
If they're there. They're going to school.
That's right.
Field of dreams.
Right, yeah.
Not, not seeing that Staples commercial, you know, favorite time of the year.
So we must still circle back and approve the bus contracts in order to get them to run on Wednesday.
Sorry, Mr. Thompson.
Could someone please read the version?
I move that the Board of Education approve the bus contracts as outlined on the list provided by staff.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now they can run.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, good sir. And thank you to all in your department, and, and who, who assist the bus drivers, and it was wonderful speaking with Ms. Tracy Steelman, and Mr. Longabardi, and Mr. Walker, and Diane.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes, yeah.
Our driver trainer, the two of our drivers.
And Mr. Carroll, yeah, absolutely, just fantastic, good group, good group, safe hands, thank you.
All right, the next board meeting will be on Wednesday, August twenty-sixth, twenty fifteen, at six o'clock. Please join us, and we are adjourned, but we will come back in fifteen, ten minutes?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes for the work session.